All right, we've got six thirty. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Town of Waukesha Town Board Meeting, Joint Meeting with the Plan Commission and Town Board. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Begin with a pledge of allegiance.
Like my dignity and spirit of flag of the United States of America and through the Republic of Louisiana, our nation, for God's sake, be a physical liberty and justice for all.
And Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Commissioner Flanagan?
Here.
Commissioner Webb?
Here.
Commissioner Stigler?
Here.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
And Commissioner Ramirez is absent. Supervisor Fisher?
Here.
Supervisor Chairman Merrick?
Present.
That's our plan commission. Do you like the town board?
Please.
Supervisor Dur?
Here.
Supervisor. Red.
Here.
Supervisor Wolf?
Here.
That's it.
Thank you. And Madam Clerk, have we met the opens meeting law?
Yes, we have.
And we can begin with the citizens' comments. Going once, going twice, and we can move on. Six accessory building for petitioner David Peterson. Location is W two five one, south forty three ninety one Oak View Drive. Tax keys W A K T one thirty eight zero one one nine. This is for discussion and possible action by the Plan Commission and Board. Planner Malarkey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The petitioner is requesting to construct a twelve foot by twenty foot accessory building on his property. The property is zone R one. It's one point zero six acres in area. The... Normally, we review accessory buildings that are six hundred square feet and over. This is under that. However, the petitioner is requesting a waiver from a offset from the rear lat line. The building itself meets all other code requirements except for the setback. He's proposing that the building be offset from the rear lat line fifteen feet as opposed to twenty feet. So, the Plan Commission would need to grant a waiver for that prior to approval. I did speak with the petitioner and we did discuss the waiver and conditions of the waiver and the fact that waivers are not typically granted unless there is a good reason to do so. So, he is aware of that. I will let him speak to the reason for the waiver after my staff review. So, I have proposed a list of conditions if the Plan Commission should choose to recommend approval. One of them, one of which is the determination of the waiver and the rest are standard conditions.
Thank you. Is the petitioner here tonight? Good evening.
Good evening.
Questions for... Why don't we start with Mr. Peterson? What is the idea behind the request for a waiver?
The... If you look at the property shown on the screen, you can see the position of our home on the right and then the space between the home to the back lot. Around that area, we have... It's basically all green space. It is in our yard. It is in the adjacent yards around them. And we have a lot of land, so most of our land is behind our home. The purpose of positioning it there is the fact that it's actually an ideal spot. The only difference would be by having a fifteen foot variance versus the twenty. It keeps the building centered more in the open space that's there and it keeps it from being pushed up against some mature trees. So, it would be uptight, not tight, but very close to those trees, tighter than it should be, I think.
Okay. Questions for, from the board and our Plan Commission for the petitioner or Planner Malarkey?
Are you afraid that it will be in the drip line of the tree? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, I think it will be in the drip line and...
What kind of trees are they?
Pardon me?
What kind of trees are they?
They're basically all fir. They're evergreens.
So, you're...
We used to have a garden there when our kids were home. Our garden was twenty-five by forty and that was a great spot. This is basically right in the center of that spot. That's where I'd like to put it. And that's why the request for the variance, just to bring it back away from those trees, there's no other concern other than that.
I'm glad Planner Malarkey made you aware that the board and Plan Commission have not been in a habit of granting variances unless there was some sort of hardship.
He did.
And... Other than just, just, I don't see a hardship by just, it's closer, better centered in an open space. And at some point, we have to realize as a board and a Plan Commission that the rules and the regulations and ordinances are on the books for a reason and primarily need to be followed. Again, unless there's some sort of hardship in place. And I understand it doesn't have to be a hardship, but that's typically what the policy of the board and Plan Commission have been.
Is it possible? Do you have the photographs of... Some of the photographs, do you have those to bring forward? Oh, you don't have them on screen?
I don't have... I don't... I have black and white copies and they're a little hard to see in my version, but the Plan Commissioners and the board members do have copies.
You know, considered, I guess, I don't know that I would consider it a hardship, but I consider the trees important. So, to do the best thing I can for our property overall, I consider it a hardship. I consider it important for the trees. I just mentioned to Sean this evening, last year I put in thirty-seven additional new trees around the property and that's because some of the others had died. I have healthy trees. Those are the ones I'd like to do everything I can to keep healthy. In the photographs, the reason I had the photographs brought is to give you an idea of how much green space there is back there. There are... All of the area around this proposed site is basically trees and green space and that goes in all directions. So, the difference between where it is by at the twenty foot versus where I'd like to be able to go with a fifteen foot variance, I don't think it would make a difference to anybody in the area at all. It would actually improve the health of that tree, the likelihood of it going forward, and I think that's important.
What is there now?
It is green space.
Well, what is...
So, so this is the area...
Okay.
...being proposed. You can't see it because the lighting is a little too bright there, but...
So, what is in your package, may I ask?
Well, what is, what is there now?
Trees.
To the right.
Yeah. If you're able to go into your package...
Sure.
Go to the first photograph. You'll see the, basically, a photo of the building itself that I'm going to build.
Okay.
And then a color sample of it. That's correct. And the color sample up against the tree there. So, basically, the idea is to have the building disappear into the trees so that you really won't see it color-wise. But go to the next page if you would. Top picture. If you take a look at the right, that's our home on the right.
Yeah.
And then if you go straight back to the left, you'll see that white area back there? That's actually a pop-up camper, okay?
Okay, that's what I'm...
And that's in the site. That's parked in the site where the shed, where I'm proposing the shed to be. So, if you look around it, you see the mature trees between the shed and our home? And you see the open space that's there? So, by moving, if you want for the sake of it, just using the camper as an image, it gives you an idea. It'd be to be moving that camper over just a little bit further to the west or to the left in this picture to center it in that open area, which has always been, I mean, I've been there twenty-eight years and it's been nothing but garden or open land. So, it's a, it's a really ideal spot.
So, that white spot there is a pop-up camper right now? That right there?
No, that's actually...
No, that's that shed.
Well, no, no, fairness, it is the pop-up camper in a different location.
Oh, now it's moved here.
That's where I pulled it over to a different location. In this photograph that you see in this brochure, in the package...
Right.
That is the camper in the spot where I would propose to build this.
So, where is this building right now?
That building is in lumber. It's, it's...
Oh, that this was just a demo picture?
That's a picture I found of a shed out east.
Oh, okay.
And I located the guy and was able to start from that. So, I'm building virtually, that's a twelve by sixteen. I'm building a twelve by twenty version.
Got it. I'm straight now. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. So, if you look around it, you can see just how much green space there is all the way around it. So, I, I don't know who considers it a hardship, but for me, I consider our trees important to us and I really believe this is a great spot for the shed to go. But I think that a few feet over makes a world of difference for the health of that tree long term and I'd like to do everything I can. That's the reason for my request. And if you look at the bottom picture, again, go to the bottom center of the picture. Now, you're standing at the front of our home, looking back as you go kind of to the, basically, in the photograph, you're going to the northwest, but it's actually to the west and southwest. That area back there again is identified. You can see the tree line and then the opening and it's all trees around it. So, there's just a, it's, it's a lot of green space and it will always remain green space and it's the best usable site on our property.
And you're concerned that if you had to bring it five feet forward, that you would damage the trees?
Yeah. If I bring it five feet east, I believe it will challenge the trees.
Because...
Because of the fact that it's going to be right in the root system and it's going to be, I think, detrimental to the building. Whereas, if we were able to move it over, it would be a great spot and it would have no effect on the trees.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions for the, by the petitioner or the planner?
Did we have any input from neighbors?
All my neighbors said they were fine with it. I did ask, well, no, I did. I asked them. And it's important, I'll tell you one of the things, because when Sean and I were talking, he said that you guys would be difficult on it and would ask why not in other areas. Well, the other areas, when he pointed to some of them, it's because in twenty-eight years of living there, we have a lot of deer that come through. And we have, you know, in twenty-eight years, we really know where and how they use the property back there. And our neighbors, looking out their back window, they're looking right down... They're looking right down this area, right through here, and that whole tree line is where all the deer coming out. And then they come right over through here on this side. They don't bend in here, but that all through, they're making that all of her here. So, Rob, when I asked him about it, he said, well, he preferred that we don't put something right in the middle of the deer run. And I said, well, it doesn't make sense to put it there for a lot of reasons. It's all landscaped. The deer are already running through there. And I said, I didn't intend to do that. I told him where I'd planned to do it. He thought that was an ideal spot because of the fact it's almost completely out of view for them. And then Al and Mary Ann to the south of us said the same thing. They appreciate it too because they also watch the deer and the building's almost completely out of sight to them as well. So, it's almost completely out of sight for all, for everyone.
Planner Malarkey, is the proposed building, meet with the requirements of thirteen to ten with regards to building materials, colors, and so forth of the primary structure?
Well, it's not exa... The, the, the structure itself doesn't exactly match the house's architecture. The intent of the actual building is to, as was mentioned by the petitioner, is kind of blend into the landscape. So, the house is obviously made of wood, is it?
Our house is a wood-framed house, yeah.
It's a wood frame house, but what's the siding material in your house? It's a, it's a little bit siding. So, you can see, the materials aren't identical to the house.
Color?
The color is shown in the first photo that you see in there. There's a color. I, I, I see that.
So, it's a gray, a grayish.
Does it match the house is the question?
Does the color match the house?
No, the color's completely different from the home. It's designed basically to disappear and that's why I put the paint stick up against the tree itself. That's the act, one of the trees that will be right next to it. So, the idea is to go into basically, just kind of disappear into the trees. The color actually came off of the rotary building. It's the same color they use on the trim of the rotary building.
I, the problem I have with this is we've recently had folks come before the board with accessory buildings and they were forced to change the design, to change the materials they were using, change the color. I think at the last meeting of the Plan Commission Town Board, we had, we had, we had a fellow that wanted to put up, was it the pool building or... And we, and he was forced to move it and it was the same type of situation. And I, for, I'm not going to be able to get behind this, either the materials, color, and relocation of it.
Excuse me? Materials and color. You're asking for what? It's going to be built with all fresh components?
Well, were, were you made aware by the planner that we, that it has not been a policy of the board and the Plan Commission to grant waivers unless there's some sort of hardship? And the two waivers that you're asking for is changing of the materials and colors. The town code is accessory building shall be compatible with the principal structure. What that means is same building materials, same colors, roof pitch, those types of things. As well as in the location that it's allowed to be per the zoning code. And I, I don't know how, did you voice that this is, we just haven't done this in the past?
So, we did discuss the fact that waivers are challenging and they're only granted for very good reasons where there's no alternatives or no reasonable alternatives for, for the building itself. In terms of the materials and colors and so on, I guess I would state that, you know, the way the code is written, it says the accessory building shall be compatible with the principal structure. Plan Commission and Board may require specific elements, may require specific elements of the structure be compatible with the principal structure, which may include building materials, colors. Doesn't say the same. It says compatible. And the idea here is to blend in the trees. So, it was my opinion that the colors and the materials was not an issue because the, the location of it and the fact that it was sort of camouflaged in the trees makes it a moot point as to whether it's exactly the same as the house or not. That was my opinion. The Plan Commission and Board may differ.
Fair enough. Not that long ago, we had a similar issue where the shed was going to be substantially off the road, hidden by trees, and at that point, we did force to have the like building colors and like siding.
True. There's also been instances where, you know, the idea of metal roofs have come up and those have been approved as well, even though the residential structure wasn't a metal roof. One came up in the past couple of months. So, there's been some flexibility. I guess, I, I, I am resting my argument on the fact that it's compatible doesn't mean the same, in my opinion.
Okay.
That's just my opinion.
I don't think the issue for me would be the compatibility. I, I agree it's compatible. To that area does not mean it needs to be the same. However, I don't think as a board, we should be approving things due to landscaping. If we use the same thing based on maybe a swimming pool or another project, you know, that's part of what green space is all about and there's still plenty of it there to say it's going to hinder a tree. I think we're setting the precedents and I'm not behind that at all.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a brief, I would largely concur with what Commissioner Webb has said in this instance. I am not that much concerned about the, and I understand the issue of compatibility with building materials and color and that type of thing. I actually think if it's built similar to the picture, it could be a fairly attractive building, but I am concerned about the issue with the building location.
Thank you. Does somebody want to turn that into a motion?
I make a motion we deny it based on the conditions that we just heard.
And, and more specifically, just the waiver of the location?
Exactly. Because I guess you could look at this later on. If you're selling the property, you have something that's in violation of the code. That's my reason. If it a survey on the property, it'd be quite, quite obvious that you were within a side yard that you shouldn't have been in.
But I got to kind of just ask if we're going to be worried about codes. I mean, and I agree with this. I mean, I, there's plenty of space here to move that building anywhere you want. It's a big yard. But if we're going to be consistent with the code, are we going to be consistent with the building itself as far as the siding and everything to match the house? Are we going to waive that and... Or not, I guess. I, I, I'm with second to denial on this myself, but I'm just concerned about, are we going to be consistent or not with past issues, you know, in past buildings and stuff like that, that we haven't been on the same page?
Well, Sean, am I right? Are we more critical? He wouldn't be before us if it was in for the location because it's under six hundred square feet. So, am I correct? You'd just be getting a building permit?
You'd get a zoning permit from me and a building permit from the building inspector. So, we would make the determination in terms of compatibility. And I think I told you how I felt about it. So, if you could give me direction on this building, that'd be very helpful for the future.
Okay, I'm sorry. That being said, that's true. If he would have just come in and not had an issue with the location, this would have went through as is, correct, Sean?
Correct.
With as far as the building siding and structure and stuff?
Yeah, I, I would have issued the building permit for this. There's a lot of smaller buildings that come forward in the town that, you know, people buy sheds at Menards or wherever it is and, and they're smaller in size. They don't get the scrutiny from the Plan Commission and Board because they're, they're smaller in nature. As long as the materials are generally fairly consistent and they look nice, usually they're, they get a zoning permit and a building permit from, from staff.
Fair enough. Commissioner Stigler, did, you, you said you would second that. Is that a second?
Yeah, after talking to Sean on what he said about that thing being passed anyway, I guess I can't say anything about the building. But yes, I will second the motion from Commissioner Flanagan.
All right. Further discussion?
So, it's a recommendation to deny to the town board, right?
It is.
Correct.
You got a first and a second? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So, then he needs to get back with you regarding a zoning permit and a building permit?
Well, it's got to come to the town board.
It, it, yes, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Well, um...
Yes, it does. Your recommendation has to deny.
We're recommendation, the, the zoning and building permit won't. The waiver for location will.
Only if he doesn't move to the appropriate place. If he moves within guidelines, it doesn't come back.
It's under six hundred square feet.
I realize that, but the gentleman is coming asking for a waiver for the setback and the town board just passed a motion to recommend denial to the town board. Excuse me, the Planning Commission just voted to recommend a denial to the town board. How much you come to the town board?
The town, it does have to go through the board because the board could still overrule. No, negative. Okay. Thank you. Let's move on then to accessory building for the petitioner Matt Vetrone. Location is W two two eight, south...
Oh, we got to do the town board portion of it.
I'm sorry. Thank you. It's the new format. Thank you. Let's move on to the town board action then. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept the recommendation from the Plan Commission.
And a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries. On to seven, accessory building for Matt Vetrone. Location is W two two eight, south forty seven fifty eight Daisy Lane. Tax keys W A K T one thirty nine forty nine eighty eight zero zero six. Planner Malarkey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The petitioner is requesting approval of a, an accessory building for an R one residentially zoned property. It's two point two nine acres in size. The building will be thirty by forty, twelve hundred square feet. It's going to be used for storage of personal items. The residence was recently constructed. The petitioner has stated that the siding on the, on the new building will be fiber cement, gauntlet gray, snow, snowbound trim, and windows of both the residence and proposed accessory building will match. They provided photographs of the existing home and a color siding sample of the proposed garage showing the matching siding. Again, anything over six hundred square feet must be approved by the Plan Commission and Board. The petitioner isn't compliant with all zoning code requirements except height. The building will be twenty-one feet in height. The application itself actually states twenty-two, but that is incorrect. It will be twenty-one feet high. And they will, they will meet the provision of section thirteen dash two dash eleven that allows height increases to be permitted up to ten feet in height. So, basically, two feet of additional setback for every one foot of height. Because the building will be three feet higher than, than the eighteen feet that's allowed, they require an additional six-foot setbacks and offsets, which is shown on the site plan. So, the Plan Commission should determine if the proposed structure is in compliance with the appearance and compatibility provision in the code. If the Plan Commission chooses to approve, I have prepared a series of nine standard conditions, including the condition requiring a deed restriction to be recorded in the property so that the accessory building is used for residential purposes only.
Thank you. And is the petitioner in the audience? Good evening. Any questions for the petitioner and/or the planner?
Just a couple of points. This, this is what we're going by as opposed to the picture of the Menards building?
Correct. The Menard program won't let me build it high enough.
Okay.
So, the size, the shape, everything's the same, but the height's different.
You apparently work for Snap-on or one of those?
Yep.
That's what's going in here?
Oh, we've got snowmobiles, lawnmowers.
But that'll fit?
That's the reason it's that high, yeah.
House is beautiful.
Because with the alarms.
Good house, good house, good garage.
With the alarm system on the truck, I don't want to, if I leave for the weekend, which we're gone quite a bit because my family's up north, with snowmobiling, if that alarm goes off and I'm gone, it's not going to be fun for a lot of people.
Do you want to, do you want to turn that into a motion? Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. The second was Flanagan. And let's move on to the town board portion of that then. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept the recommendation of the Plan Commission.
And a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Um, on to eight, uh, public hearing for petitioner, John Hup. This is for CISA one. Notice is hereby given that it's a public hearing involving the Town Walkshow Plan Commission and the Town Walkshow Board shall be held August, I'm sorry, Thursday, August ninth, beginning at six-thirty P M. at the Walkshow Town Hall located at W two-five oh, south thirty-five sixty-seven Center Road, Walkshow, Wisconsin, to hear proposed conditional use request under thirteen dash two dash nine, sub J, sub nineteen for petitioner, John Hup. Uh, business is CISA one, location is south twenty-two west two-two-six-six-zero Broadway, building number four and, building number four and number four? Is that correct?
Should be three and four.
Building number three and four. Tax key is part of W A K T two-nine-nine-nine-seven zero 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 one, uh, specifically for a public building and use in a B one zoning district. All interested parties will be heard and given an opportunity to be heard. Planner Malarkey.
Mister Chairman, may I speak?
Yes.
I have, um, an, um, ownership interest in the property that's subject discussion, so I will be stepping away from the table at this point in time at whatever time you wanna mark it at.
Perfect. Thank you. Um, is there anybody else that needs to step away, given the nature of a conditional use? That you may be opposed to? And specifically, I'm looking at you, Commissioner Stigler, because at the last meeting of this board, you had said that you don't agree with the way that the law was passed and you couldn't get behind, uh, issuing conditional uses. Well, specifically, you said you didn't like the way that the law was passed and you wouldn't get a lot, behind the law. Well, it's a conditional use for, uh, a public hearing for a conditional use within the new conditional law. And specifically, you said you didn't like how Act sixty-seven was passed, and therefore you weren't gonna participate in conditional uses. I respectfully disagree. It's a conditional use, and that's, and your comments were that you were not gonna participate in conditional uses. But we'll, I strongly disagree. It's not old history. It's a, it's a month old. We can move on. Planner Malarkey.
Uh, thank you, Mister Chairman. So, the existing property located on, um, Broadway and Highway fifty-nine is two point two acres in size. It's zoned B one, a restricted business district. Uh, the future land use plan shows the property as commercial. The petitioner is requesting a conditional use, um, for CISA, which is the Cooperative Educational Service Agency. This is, uh, location number one. Um, no, location number one is one of twelve across the state. Um, they are requesting to operate two instructional programs on the subject property. Um, CISA's were created by the Wisconsin Legislature more than fifty years ago to serve as a link between school districts and between school districts and the state. Um, so there's a, there's, what they're proposing here is, uh, program for middle school students facing emotional or beha- behavioral challenges to be located in suites three A and three B, which on the map, uh, above are, is this area here, sort of in the center of the site. Uh, instructional programming would include small group and individualized construction. The program currently leases building number four, which is just north of that. Um, they've leased the property for over eighteen years for another program, uh, which serves high school students. Uh, in nineteen ninety-nine, the plan of operation was approved for that existing use on the site. Um, at the time, it was approved as a professional office, which is a permitted use in the B one district. Um, when the, when the petition came forward to expand the use in building three, um, my opinion was is that the, the, the use that's existing and, and it's being proposed doesn't fit our definition of professional, uh, office uses. Um, that was approved at the time. Uh, professional offices are defined as the offices of a doctor, practitioner, dentist, minister, architect, landscape architect, engineer, lawyer, author, musician, or similar professions. And then, public buildings is defined as public buildings in the sense of this ordinance are structures principally of an institutional nature and serving a public need such as churches, hospitals, schools, including private academic schools and nurseries, uh, et cetera. Uh, so, it's my opinion that the proposed use and the existing use are, are public use in nature, uh, which is a conditional use in the B one zoning district. So, I recommended that not only for the, for the new use in building three, but also for the existing use in building four, that the petitioner come forward and request a conditional use that's all encompassing of all the uses on the site. Um, as mentioned in previous meetings, per recent legislation, conditional uses require that decisions must be made based on substantial evidence, um, and, and that any conditions imposed shall be, uh, shall be reasonable and to the extent practicable, measurable. Um, so I've, I've, uh, included a, a series of comments here, um, similar to past conditional uses. Um, we have some general conditional uses that, standards that apply to all conditional uses in the town. Um, there's a few specific conditions that apply just to public buildings and uses. Uh, those would be that the location, the building and site plans and plan of operation shall be submitted. Um, they have done that. No changes to the site or exterior are, are being proposed at this time, so no changes to the site are proposed. Uh, the use of confirmed all setback, height and offset requirements, uh, which is the case. The buildings that exist now conform to existing regulations, and that the height should not, not exceed fifty feet, which is the case for the existing buildings. So, um, it's my opinion that, um, that they conform to the specific use requirements. In terms of the actual plan of operation that's being proposed, in building three, um, suites three and three B are, are proposed for the new use, which would be small group and individualized instruction for middle school students, um, and special, middle school special education students. In building four, which is the existing use on the site, that's an alternative education program for underserved students in grades nine through twelve, with options for credit attainment and GED and a credit recovery program for students with a special education impairment and or need for special instruction. Hours of operation for both programs will be seven A M. to four P M. Monday through Friday. Uh, the maximum number of employees for the middle school building, uh, program in building three, that would be three staff members, and then, and then building four for the high school program, that will be two staff members. The maximum number of students for the middle school program is sixteen students, while the high school program will be twenty students. There'll be no company vehicles on site. Um, in terms of parking spaces, the petitioner has said that a total of ten parking spaces are, uh, will be required. That's five for staff members and up to five for visitors and students. And again, no modifications to the site plan. In terms of site circulation and parking for the site, uh, basically, the way it operates is buses will come in off of Broadway and, uh, and drop students off in front of the building. Uh, they'll also park there and wait briefly to pick students up, um, at, at times of pickup. So, I think the times are, uh, between three, for the high school program, between three and four buses arrive in the morning, midday and afternoon, and then the middle school will have, uh, two to three buses at these same times. Um, wh- after they arrive on site, they basically, uh, proceed north, uh, on the site and turn around at the north end of the site and then, and then turn back around. Um, parking requirements in the town ordinance basically requires one space for each employee for secondary and elementary schools, um, plus two spaces for every student, except that, that's not required for elementary school students. Uh, the Plan Commission does have the right to modify that as well. Uh, as I mentioned before, the program would serve up to sixteen middle school students in building three. Uh, most of them would arrive by bus. Some might be dropped off by parents, and then twenty high school students in building four to the north, mainly also arrive by bus. Some potentially being dropped off by parents, and then, uh, a few by personal vehicle as well. Um, and I also mentioned there's, there's five staff members there. The entire parking lot has sixty-four parking spaces. The existing use in building four that was approved, the site plan, plan of operation for that, um, was required to have twelve parking spaces at the time. But again, as I mentioned, the petitioner stated that only a total of ten basically are required for both programs at this time. Uh, the Plan Commission should determine if the proposed parking on the subject, on the property is appropriate. They're not proposing any, um, a, a site, any signage at this time. If they do, if there would be additional signage for, for the use, they'd need to come forward again. As I mentioned, the, the use itself meets all B one regulations, except for the fact that it is a conditional use. Um, we have updated the conditional use worksheet, the beloved conditional use worksheet that you guys have seen in the past. Um, there's a couple of changes that have been made. Uh, one change is that under each condition now, there is a, a line for substantial evidence. So, as we go through the conditional use worksheet, uh, and, and we find that substantial evidence has been presented or has been met, we should note what that substantial evidence is, uh, for the record and, uh, and for the permit going forward. The other thing is, is on the last page of the, the worksheet, we have simplified the motions so that the motion to approve is basically one motion, uh, and there's not a bunch of different optional items. There's one optional items that basically gets made if there are changes to the conditions that have been set forth. And then there's the motion to n- to deny is, is, is one, basically one motion as well with no alternatives. Uh, if the Plan Commission chooses to approve, um, I made a series of recommendations, but we can get to those, uh, as, as a matter of course, within the, the worksheet itself.
Thank you. And is the petitioner here this evening?
Yes, I am, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening.
And does, uh, any member of the public wish to speak on this matter? Seeing none, um, uh, if you have something to present to the board and the Plan Commission, please do.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Sean, I think it summarized pretty much, uh, what we're intending to use the property for. I think probably it speaks for itself because we've been in the building for eighteen years. We've been successfully working with the school districts and the students of Walkshow County. Uh, it's been very helpful and it's been successful. Uh, students have, in, in the past, in the nine through twelve program, achieved GEDs where they wouldn't necessarily achieve them in their normal environment, and that's what part of the purpose is when they're placed in this program and worked through that. It's all voluntary as far as working with the school districts. They choose to use the service. And what we've found is, is there's a need for transitioning the middle school kids to be able to make it into high school, and that's what we're proposing here for the new building use. If you have any questions, I'll certainly answer those.
Any questions for either the petitioner and/or Sean?
Are the students currently dropped off in school buses?
Generally, the high school students are. There are occasionally that would have, let's say, like work-study where they may come and then bring their own vehicle and then go, attend the program and then go on to work. Uh, but most of them are generally dropped off by some sort of transportation. It's generally a small school bus that may be coming in.
Any full-size buses?
No.
No, okay.
And Sean, is there adequate, um, area for buses to navigate in that?
That, that was one of my concerns when I, when I reviewed this, was that, right now, there is, um, there's, there's ample supply of parking spaces on the site, in my opinion. Uh, right now, the buses, this, you know, they're shorter, they're not longer. They pull into a spot. They, and they sort of do a wide turn and back out and come around. Um, so I think it's, it works well. It's worked for eighteen years. I don't necessarily see it as a problem. Um, if you felt it was necessary, we, there's a, you know, one condition that I might recommend would be, um, m- maybe reserving one or two spots just for the sake of turnaround in case in the future, depending on what other uses were on the, on the property, if parking became an issue, there'd always be a place for the buses to pull in and navigate and turn around. But that's not, that, as, as of now, that condition is not in my report and not one of the standard conditions.
So, currently, uh, they would go up to the north end of the parking lot and turn around. As, as Sean has said, that there's generally, uh, not many cars there. The other thing is, is that directly in front of the, uh, entrance on the north end, there's a designation that is not allowed for parking, and that certainly could be used, and the landlord has agreed to saying that they could turn around there if they needed to, if it wasn't available with the parking.
I think at this time, we can close the public hearing and move on to nine. The conditional use for petitioner, John Hup, business is CISA one, location is south twenty-two west two-two-six-six-zero, uh, Broadway, building number three and four. Tax key is part of W A K T two-nine-nine-nine-seven zero 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 one. Uh, this is for discussion and possible action by the town board and Plan Commission. And does anybody on the Plan Commissioner Board have any questions?
Well, I had an office there for almost five years, and, uh, I keep returning. And there's no, there's no problem there. I agree. There's small school buses that come in, and there's plenty of parking.
Thank you.
I'm not sure if this is the appropriate time or not, but the, uh, we put people through extensive loops or hoops or whatever you wanna call it for conditional use permits relative to site plan and landscaping. I toured the site, and it's quite an abomination of landscaping. I don't know if this is, it could be part of this thing that that gets finished once and for all.
Um, Planner Malarkey, what is our, uh, in the conditional use code, I believe there is, um, language to that effect that it has to be, before a conditional use is per, is issued, it has to, landscaping and so forth has to be, uh, meet town code?
Well, when site plan and plan of operations are approved, obviously, things have to meet town code. And if they're proposing a new building or renovation or, or whatever was being proposed was in excess of twenty-five percent of the value of the buildings, then landscape requirements kick in. Um, so there's no specific requirement that this has to be landscaped to code per the conditional use. However, the conditional use process does allow you to consider landscape requirements as part of this. So, the, the site exists as it is now. What, it was approved, I have no idea when the original site plan for the whole thing was approved, but it was approved at the time under whatever landscape requirements were in place in the town at the time. So, when a new use comes in, it doesn't trip a landscape threshold if they're not doing anything else to the site. But as part of the conditional use process, you have the right to put reasonable conditions on there related to landscaping if you think that they're, they're necessary for the conditional use.
Fair enough. Um, Commissioner Miller, do you have specific items that you would like addressed in that regard?
Well, um, probably nothing additional. Just to finish what's there. I'm not sure exactly what took place in the past five years, but there's, have you been there?
I drive by, yes.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I, I don't understand. I mean, if you own it, Brian, what's the deal? I think we owe it to the, uh, folks that live here that we represent ourselves in the same light that we expect other people to.
What, what specifically do you have a major concern? There's a retaining wall area to be finished a bit?
Well, there's tar paper, uh, uh, landscape fabric and stone and, and retaining walls and lack of, I'm not even sure that these, these trees or bushes that are represented on the site plan are even there. They may be. I couldn't tell you.
Which ones are you talking about?
Well, there's about ten of them here. I don't know. You submitted it. It says site location.
You're talking about aerial photograph?
Scheme B. It's an overlay that was put onto an aerial photograph.
Yeah, so which trees is it that you're talking about?
All of them.
Well, first of all, I can point out...
This, this is the right-of-way line is here. All of this property is not, is not private property. That's all in the public right-of-way.
So, you representing, standing there, that everything to the west of that right-of-way line is one hundred percent landscaped?
No, I'm still finishing a retaining wall. I don't know whether you can move it up. Uh, the tree that is right of that location was retaining wall area to be finished there.
Yeah. And can we, at what point in this, uh, proceedings do we make that part of the?
So, there is one condition in here. Um, it doesn't talk about landscaping per se, but it does state that, uh, we usually have a standard condition about the premises being kept neat and in oily condition. So, I, I modified that condition, so it, it basically now reads, uh- So I, I've modified that condition so it, it basically now reads, uh, petitioner shall keep the exterior condition of the premises in a neat and oily condition at all times so the premises will not detract from neighboring premises. There shall be no outside stores of junk, debris, construction material, or other refuse material within the property. And all such materials shall be disposed of promptly and properly. And then something that's got added was the conditional use permit will not be issued until the, until the property is in full compliance with this condition. So it doesn't specifically mention landscaping, but it does talk about debris and construction equipment and material.
We've got, there's some demolition debris between the front two buildings, which will be cleaned up within the next couple of weeks. It's some of the demolition materials that have come out of the suite that's being renovated. So that'll be cleaned up within the next two weeks.
So I'm just looking on G I S and the right-of-way line is rather deep into, it appears to be rather deep into the property. Is that something you could contact? I guess the county, although it's a state highway to get that maintained?
I have made multiple requests to the Department of Transportation. And Waukesha County actually maintains that to mow and maintain that part of the right-of-way. In fact, even if you look at the tree, go with your cursor way over to the right, that is actually on the public right-of-way. Okay, that's a, um, conifer, if you will. I'm finishing a retaining wall area around that. I even actually asked them to remove, if you go down and to the lower left, uh, there used to be, that tree that's right there was a hickory tree. I thought it was actually kind of regrettable three summers ago that was taken down when they ran the thirty-six inch water main through their beautiful hickory tree. It was actually a nice tree, as it turns out, when they removed it, it was rotted out from the interior. The one just to the left of that is kind of a hungry-looking conifer. I have talked to the people, the state D O T. I've even had tenants ask if that could be removed. And basically they have said you are not allowed to touch them, that. What I've done even in some of the area out in front of it, I actually took a permit out from the, uh, state D O T to basically do some restoration, um, in the area where there were ground hogs and so forth. The state refused to do it. They allowed me to take out a permit, I had to put my registration seals on it. I'm doing that at my expense because they refused to retain, they refused basically to maintain the right-of-way. So I'm doing that in the right-of-way on my dime.
So then it, you'll be, in two weeks, whatever else needs to be done with retaining walls, refuse piles, that's all, all that sort of thing, that'll be, you, uh...
The, the construction debris will be done in two weeks. The, balance the retaining wall probably within the month to six weeks will be done completely.
Okay. And can I assume then that you're looking, Mr. Hope, for a conditional use sooner than that? Sooner than the four to six weeks, is that what it was?
That's correct.
Okay. Planner Malarkey, can we tie the conditional use to a, a timeline of say, six weeks? If, and Brian, if that's adequate enough time for you to finish everything up? Refuse piles, all it, uh, la- whatever landscaping left to be completed?
Six weeks from what date?
Well, I guess it depends on what, uh, when the conditional use is issued.
So normally if it got approval by the Plan Commission and the board, we could, you know, the attorney needs to look at it, we need to place it in final form. But the conditional use permit could be issued within a week, two weeks maximum, depending on schedules and so on. So that's normally when it's issued. So are you saying that it would not be issued for six weeks?
No, I would, I would say that we're, we're tying.
Issue with, issue with the condition that it be, that it be cleaned up within six weeks?
Correct, within six weeks of the issuance of the conditional use.
Sure.
Okay.
And, and so right now it states that it talks about junk, debris, construction material, other refuse material. Do we want to talk about the retaining wall as well? Want to mention that specifically?
Well, I think we, um, Brian, I think we discussed that and it's, whatever landscaping is left to be completed would be completed.
Landscaping and retaining wall completed.
Fair, Brian?
Fair.
Okay. So then we need to go through our worksheet, which seems to have grown in size to seven pages. Thank you very much. So Sean, did you go through?
There's less conditions though. Than the vast monstrosity.
Maybe the print is just larger.
There you go.
Sean, did you go through with the petitioner then and, and, and walk through Act sixty-seven and the fact that we're looking for substantial evidence to accommodate that, that he's meeting the conditions?
We did, we did discuss that. We discussed it in a general sense in terms of how it meets the general conditions of health, safety, and welfare and then those types of things that have been tough to kind of define in the past. And one of the things, one of the stru- obviously nothing's changing with the site plan and so on, but, you know, one of the pieces of evidence that they submitted as per their application was that, was that it's been there for eighteen years, operating one of these programs and that there, there hasn't been a complaint about, about the way it's operated. You know, uh, Mr. Flanagan kind of provided that same testimony as well as an operator or a, a, a user of the space as well. So I, I think they're mostly hanging their hat on that. In terms of specific criteria, they're meeting the specific criteria for public buildings and uses. They're meeting the site plan, plan of operation criteria, in my opinion, because nothing is changing with the site plan, plan of operation. The, the Plan Commission Board may choose to add additional standards there in terms of additional landscaping and things if you think that's required. But as it stands now, I believe they're meeting it. So the question really boils down to is the general conditional use criteria, which is on page four of seven, will not violate spirit and intent of the ordinance, will not be contrary, will not be hazardous, et cetera, et cetera. Whether or not they provide enough evidence for that is, I guess, is what needs to be determined. My specific conditions start on page five of seven. These are just the conditions that are, that are the non-general conditions that we apply to any conditional use. These are the specific ones that speak to their plan of operation. The petitioner has agreed to meet all of these. So you'll need to determine whether or not you believe that there's substantial evidence in terms, terms of what's presented, whether or not they can meet these conditions or not. So I guess I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. All right then, uh, for the Plan Commission, uh, let's start on page two of seven.
Mr. Chairman, might I make a, make a recommendation?
Yes.
As we go through each of the conditions and each of the questions, might we handle them both at the same time and ask the question twice?
Sure.
At the same time, once for Planning Commission and once for Town Board?
I, I think that would be very acceptable and help speed the process along.
Uh, I have just a question as well. This is not the first one that we've gone through, so we've got some familiarity with it. But it's my recollection that in the past, when these have been presented and have been asked, that the petitioner has given substantial evidence? Is there something that's being presented or are we just, as a board and a Plan Commission, supposed to come up with that on our own?
We are not supposed to come up with it, no. But I guess we would get to that when we got to those specific questions.
So as we go through this, we're going to ask for substantial evidence from the petitioner?
Yes.
Okay.
And if I could clarify, so what you're, what's, what needs to be determined is whether or not substantial evidence has been presented in the application or in the testimony given today as to whether or not they meet these conditions or will meet these conditions. So whether or not you believe, based on what's been presented, whether they can meet or will meet these conditions.
Yeah. And, and just for your, um, so that you understand what we're talking about. Act sixty-seven was passed last November, do I have that right? And, and signed into law by Governor Walker. And what it is, is it, it's specific to conditional uses and the law is very specific. It says petitioners and/or opposition to a petition have to sub, have to submit substantial evidence that they are or are not meeting certain code requirements within the conditional use. And that's, that's what we're talking about.
Okay.
And it's very, and it's, it's very specific. You can no longer, on a whim or based on a popularity contest, um, not apply the same standards to everybody. In other words, if there was a roomful of people all, all squawking here that, um, they don't want, they don't want that school there, they have to tell us why it doesn't meet the conditions in the conditional use. Conversely, so do you.
Okay.
So.
But, but I'm still confused because when we went through this on some of the others, there were specific open public hearings where the substantial evidence was presented. We went through that multiple times on seven of them, where the petitioner and the opponents came through and presented their evidence and that's what we had to base our decision on. I've heard nothing today in a public hearing on this.
You're correct.
So we're going to go through this exercise and say, okay, now you're going to present substantial evidence? The only thing that I've heard, and I'm not saying I'm opposed to this, but the only thing I've heard is we've been here for eighteen years and that Commissioner Flanagan had an office there for five years. So that's our substantial evidence? Like, I'm, I'm having a real hard time understanding that this is a new rule that we're supposed to follow that Governor Walker put through, but there's been nothing presented to us.
Right, so, so.
So how am I as a board member supposed to make that decision?
Yeah, so in addition to that, there's the application itself, which shows the site plan, which shows where the uses are going to be. Some of the provisions are whether or not it meets our site plan requirements. So you can certainly base your decision on those questions, on whether or not you think what's been presented in the application meets the requirements of our site plan ordinance. You may disagree, but they did present a site plan and you can make your determination for those questions based on, on that. The general health, safety, and welfare, general conditions that apply to any condition are similar potentially as to what was done for the gamma off one, where, where we went through each and every one of those questions and based on the way the, the building was operated and existed in the neighborhood for, for, for a period of time, that's how determination of substantial evidence was based in that case is, is, is the fact that it existed for a period of time and there was no issues with it and so on and so forth. So you got to use what you got. If you don't think there's enough there to base it on, you should definitely say so. And then we can certainly ask the petitioner to clarify if, if we need to.
Well, we, we can and we can't because it's supposed to be only information that was gathered at the public hearing.
And the public hearing's been closed.
So on, along those lines, Supervisor Radkey, I'm not sure that I have a whole lot of, um, concern for, for me personally. For instance, if I'm on page three of seven, the plan of operation is complete and meets the intent of the ordinance, is there substantial evidence been presented? Well, I would, I would argue that that has been and it's based on the site plan, plan of operation that's been submitted along with the application and the explanation of, um, um, what, what's going to be done there. Same with the, same with number three, number four, we've talked about landscaping and that the, um, uh, the building owner, the landowner has agreed to, uh, tidy the place up and finish landscaping, exterior lighting standards. I think that's part of the site plan, plan of operation. Onto page four, uh, will not violate the, the intent of the ordinance. Again, I, I, for me personally, I would put that under the site plan, plan of operation and the application that was submitted. Wouldn't be hazardous, harmful, or noxious. And I think by the mere fact that they've been there for eighteen years and there hasn't been a problem, I would consider that. Shall conform the building location, height, area of regulations, I, again, site plan, plan of operation. So I, I'm, I guess where I'm headed is I'm not taking a whole lot of, um, I, I, I don't see it as a, as a problem for me to get by.
Fair enough.
Okay. So let's get back to, um, page two. And for the Plan Commission, is, is a condition requirement applicable? And, uh, with regards to building location, site plans, plan of operations submitted, um, I, I would say yes. And if you disagree, just please, um, yes or no would be the, the simple answer. For me, it's a, it is applicable and it, and it meets it. And that would be for the Plan Commission, any, any disagreement? And then for the board?
Well, is, whether this is applicable or not, wouldn't that be a no? I mean, they're not making any building modifications, so it doesn't apply in this case.
The building, site plan, plan of operations should still be permitted, um...
Such that the, such use shall conform to the setback height and offset requirements of the district in which it is located.
Fair enough, they are, they are not making any modifications, so.
So it doesn't apply here?
Doesn't apply.
Then you don't have to ask B, C, and D.
You are correct. And then for?
Let's read them.
Has the applicant provided substantial evidence with regards to setback, building height, site plan, plan of operation? And again, that probably doesn't apply because no mu- no exterior modifications are being made. Has substantial.
Sorry, which one are you on?
I'm sorry, I'm on page two of seven and I'm on B.
Okay.
Uh, C has substantial evidence that the contrary been provided. My answer from a Plan Commission perspective would be no. And, um, board also would be no for me. Any disagreement?
Well, again, I don't think that this applies. Are we talking about the height limitation may be extended to a maximum of fifty feet, provided the minimum setback, required setbacks and offsets shall be increased two feet and every additional foot of height in the excess of the permitted maximum of that district? I don't believe that applies in this case.
In the, in the upper C, I'm taking A, B, and C all at once. And I don't, the, whether or not it applies, the question was, has the substantial evidence been provided to the contrary? I'm on C. I skip, I may, perhaps I skipped ahead.
Column C, not row C.
Column C, thank you.
I'm trying to expedite this process and not being success, very successful at it. But my understanding is, is that when you answer column A, is condition requirement applicable? If you answer that no, then you don't need to go to column B, C, or D.
Okay, fair enough. And in line C?
There you go.
Not applicable again.
Now I see where we're getting crossed up.
Okay. So then we can move on to page three. Site plan application per thirteen dash two dash four, the C is complete, meets the intent of the ordinance. Is this condition, uh, requirement applicable? My answer for Plan Commission would be yes. And Town Board?
Yes.
And then on to column B, has the applicant provided substantial evidence? My answer from the Plan Commission perspective would be yes, and that would be in the application that they've submitted. Any disagreement? I am on one B, correct. And from the Town Board?
Yes.
And then let's move on to C, has substantial evidence been provided to the contrary? My answer is no. Plan Commission? No disagreement? And Town Board?
No. No.
And is the condition requirement met? My answer would be yes. From the Plan Commission?
Yes, yes.
And Board?
Yes.
And let's move on to row C, uh, row two. The plan of operation per section thirteen, two dash D is complete, meets the intent of the ordinance. My answer from the Plan Commission would be yes. No disagreement? And from the Board?
Yes.
And has the applicant provided substantial evidence? My answer would be yes from the Plan Commission. And Board?
Yes.
And any evidence to the contrary has been provided? My answer would be no from the Board, from the Plan Commission? And from the Board, please?
No.
And then lastly, is the condition? And then lastly, "Is the condition or requirement been met?" My answer would be yes, from the Plan Commission. And the Board?
Yes.
And "General architectural principles and criteria as established in thirteen dash two dash four, sub E and F are met." Uh, is it a requi, a condition or requirement applicable? I would say that it is not an applicable principle, 'cause there's been no, uh, exterior modifications. And Board?
No.
Then we can move on to four. Landscape standards per section thirteen, two dash four are met. Um, it is applicable, because we've talked about landscaping and finishing it up. Uh, so from Plan Commission, would that be a yes? And the Board?
Yes.
Say again? Fair enough, but we did have a conversation with the property owner, and he's, and he is going to, we talked about finishing the landscaping, finishing landscaping in the right of way, or the care of the land, the property in the right of way, the retaining walls.
So, in terms of the point system, the point system only applies when new buildings are proposed or, or building additions are proposed and so on. So, I, again, I don't know when this was originally planned and permitted. At the time, it had to meet whatever landscape standards were in place at the time. But whatever he's doing now with the landscaping and retaining wall isn't necessarily based on the requirements of this section.
So four should probably be, four should probably be a no, then, it's not an applicable requirement?
Sure.
No, is it, is it, is it applicable? Is it applicable? Okay, and Board?
No.
Uh, then we can move on to five. Exterior lighting standards per thirteen dash two dash four are met. Uh, I would say that is not applicable, because again, nothing exterior-wise is done. Uh, exterior site usage standards per thirteen dash two dash four are met. And again, I would say that is not applicable. Any disagreement?
So that was five and six?
Yes. That's correct.
No.
Okay. Onto page four. "The determination of conditional use shall be based on consideration of the following. These have been reworded in italics to be consistent with the format of the decision matrix in the columns to the right. Will not violate the spirit or intent of the ordinance." Is it an applicable requirement? And I would say it is. Any disagreement from the Plan Commission? And Board?
Yes.
And "Has the applicant provided substantial evidence to the same?" My answer from the Plan Commission perspective would be yes. And Board?
Yes.
And "Has substantial evidence to the contrary been provided?" My answer would be no, from the Plan Commission? And Board?
No.
And "Is the condition or requirement been met?" And from the Plan Commission, yes. And Board?
Yes.
And "Will not be contrary to public health, safety, or general welfare," I, I believe- Okay, so the, um, application and the site plan, plan of operation, and it would remain the same for most of those. Fair enough. Uh, "Will not be public, uh, contrary to public health, safety, and general welfare." Is it, uh, applicable? My answer is yes. Plan Commission? And Board?
Yes.
And "Has the applicant provided substantial evidence?" Uh, yes, and Madam Clerk, I would say that that is based on the fact that they've been there for eighteen years and haven't had any issues, Plan Commission? And Board?
Yes.
And "Has any contrary evidence been, uh, supplied?" My answer is no. And Board?
No.
And "Lastly, is the condition been met?" My answer from the Plan Commission would be yes. And Board?
Yes.
And then on to three, "Will not be hazardous, harmful, noxious, offensive, or nuisance by reason of noise, dust, smoke, odor, or other similar factor for any other reason than a cause of substantial adverse effect on the property values and general desire ability of the neighborhood." Uh, it is a applicable requirement, Plan Commission? And Board?
Yes.
And "Has the applicant provided substantial evidence?" Yes, because he's been there for eighteen years, Plan Commission? And Board?
Yes.
And "Has substantial evidence to the contrary been provided?" My answer is no. Plan Commission? And "Has the condition been met?" And my answer would be yes. You don't get a lot of complaints out of there? And, uh-
So col- column C for the Board?
I'm sorry, column C for the Board, uh, it was a no for, for us? Thank you. Uh, "Except as may be specifically otherwise provided, any such use shall conform to the building location, height, and regular, air, area regulations of the district in which it is located, and the approving body may require compliance with such other conditions as may deem necessary in a specific situation." I think this is probably where we get into the landscaping, um, requirement that it get cleaned up. Uh, so I would say it is applicable. Plan Commission? And Board?
Yes.
And "Has the applicant provided substantial evidence?" Uh, I don't know that the applicant has, but I would say that the property owner has. So, Plan Commission?
Yes, yes.
And "Has any, uh, evidence to the contrary been submitted?" The answer is no. And Board? And "Lastly, is the condition met?" And my answer would be yes, Plan Commission? And Board?
Yes.
It's quite the process.
You can thank your state legislators.
Onto page five. "Conditional use approval is limited to allow the following plan of operation, the building use, uh, as outlined in number two. Is the condition requirement applicable?" My answer would be yes, Plan Commission? And Board?
Yes.
And "Has the applicant provided substantial evidence?" I would say yes, through the, uh, site plan, plan of operation, Plan Commission? And Board?
Yes.
And "Has substantial, to the evidence contrary been provided?" The answer is no. And Board?
No.
And "Is the condition requirement been met?" My answer is yes. And Board?
Yes.
And "Hours of operation will be seven AM to four PM, Monday through Friday." Uh, is it an applicable requirement? My answer is yes, Plan Commission? And Board?
Yes.
And "Has the applicant provided substantial evidence?" I would say yes, through the site plan, plan of operation. And Plan Commission? And the Board?
Yes.
And "Has there been any evidence to the contrary?" The answer is no. Plan Commission? And Board? And "Is the condition been met?" Yes, is my answer from Plan Commission and the Board?
Yes.
And "Maximum number of employees, uh, will be five between the two." Is an applicable requirement? My answer is yes, Plan Commission? And Board?
Yes.
And "Has the applicant provided substantial evidence?" The answer would be yes, through the site plan, plan of operation, Plan Commission? And the Board?
Yes.
And "Has any substantial evidence to the contrary been submitted?" The answer is no, Plan Commission? And Board?
Yes, excuse me, no.
Thank you. And "Has the condition been met?" The answer would be yes, Plan Commission? And the Board?
Yes.
Thank you. And "Maximum number of students, uh, sixteen and twenty." And, uh, through the site plan, plan of operation application, I believe that's applicable? Plan Commission? And Board?
Yes.
And "Has the applicant provided substantial evidence?" The answer would be yes, Plan Commission? And Board?
Yes.
And "Has any contrary been supplied?" The answer would be no. And Board?
No.
And "Has the condition been met?" The answer would be yes. And Board?
Yes.
And "Company vehicles, there are none." Uh, that has been talked about through the application and the site plan, plan of operation, so there's a condition that is applicable. My answer is yes, and the Plan Commission? And Board?
Yes.
And "Has the applicant provided substantial evidence?" My answer would be yes. Plan, and Board?
Yes.
And "Has anything to the contrary been provided?" My answer is no. And Board?
No.
And "Has the condition been met?" The answer would be yes. And Board?
Yes.
And, uh, parking, the total of ten spaces, uh, are allowed, and the answer is, it is a condition, it is a condition that is applicable, it is on the site plan, plan of operation. Plan Commission? And Board?
Yes.
And "Has applicants provided substantial evidence?" My answer would be yes. And Board?
Yes.
And "Has anybody provided any contrary information?" The answer would be no, Plan Commission? And Board?
No.
And "Has the condition been met?" The answer is yes. And the Board?
Yes.
And number seven, "The petitioner shall keep the exterior condition of the premises neat and orderly conditioned at all times, so the premises will not detract from neighborhood premises. There should be no outdoor, outside storage of junk debris, construction material, or the refuse within the property. All such materials shall be disposed of properly and properly. Conditional use permit will not be issued to the properties in full compliance." It is applicable, but, uh, plan and malarkey, we should put in that it, it's, uh, within six weeks of the date of the issue, issuance of the conditional use, excuse me.
And also includes landscaping and the retaining wall that's in process.
Correct. So my answer would be yes, Plan Commission? And Board? And "Has the applicant provided substantial evidence?" Uh, my answer would be yes, Plan Commission? And Board? And "Has anything to the contrary been provided?" My answer is no, Plan Commission? And Board? And "Has the condition been met?" My answer is yes, Plan Commission? And Board? Okay. Almost done, page seven of seven. Is there a motion to approve? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and from the Board, is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion, we accept the recommendation of the Plan Commission.
In a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Painful but necessary.
I thank everybody for their efforts in this process, so thank you.
Too many lawyers in the world.
Um, on to, what's that? Oh. Uh, on to ten, "Discussion of Possible Action, Quorum Rules, and Point of Order Response." Attorney Macy did, um, put together a, um, opinion on this, and, um-
Mr. Chairman, given the fact that Mr. Macy is not present this evening, I'd like to make a motion to table this to September thirteenth.
Okay. Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and discuss the process for conceptual review of future proposed amendments to the Smart Growth, uh, Comprehensive Plan. Madam Clerk?
Sorry. Uh, so we just wanted to bring your attention that, you know, i- in the Comprehensive Plan, there's a provision that says we update the Comprehensive Plan no more than once a year, and it happens in September. Obviously, things can be fast-tracked if there's a need, but in general, it happens in September. So, the process is as follows, is that, um, a- all applications have to be in the month before, prior to September, September's next month's meeting. Um, there happens to be one, uh, Comprehensive Plan Amendment, that application that has been submitted, so that will be on the agenda for next month. Um, so, that's, that's seen at the Plan Commission in September for the first time. It's conceptual in nature, no action is taken at that particular time. It's reviewed again then in October. And then after that, a public hearing is scheduled for the November meeting. So it's basically a three-month process for any Comprehensive Plan Amendment, so there will be one petition, but there's also a provision in the code that states that the town should review the, the, the plan annually to determine if there's a need to make any changes to it. And over, over the course of the, the year, we've discussed a couple of things and potential changes, and one that stands out to me was, uh, the Merrill Hills, uh, PUD. Uh, the golf cour, the, the golf course is already planned for recreational purposes. The driving range is not, the driving range in the town's plan has it as residential. The county's plan shows it as recreational. They were going to submit a petition at some point, uh, they wanted to change that. We said to hold off on that one until we changed the actual plan, uh, in September. This might be an opportunity to do so. So I guess the question I'm asking the Plan Commission and Board is, is it appropriate to bring that forward as part of the, the cycle of Comprehensive Plan Amendments uh, next month, as the beginning of the three-month process for that one? And is there potentially any other ones we should consider at this time? Now, I know the plan, the last, the plan's done in two thousand nine, that was, you know, the, the last overhaul of it. From my opinion, it probably should, th- th- we should probably look at it more in-depth, maybe starting next year, um, for something a little more comprehensive, maybe update some of the demographics, take a look at the map in general. One of the big changes that's happening is obviously the West Bypass that's coming through. There might be some potential to look at some land uses in that area as to what might make more sense with that coming through. We haven't discussed that yet. I don't know if it's appropriate to start to consider that now, or for next month, or that's something that should wait till next year. So I'm just, I just wanted to bring this to your attention, talk about the process, 'cause it's fast approaching, and maybe get feedback on what might, some potential changes be, if you feel strongly one way or the other.
Thank you. Uh, at this time, we can adjourn the Plan Commission? And, uh, go on to accounts payable?
I move to adjourn the meeting of Plan Commission.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I take that back, sorry.
No problem. Motion carries. Uh, accounts payable. Uh, no Rooker and Milky Bill, the, uh, bills are in the amount of one thousand, I'm sorry, one hundred and forty-seven thousand, ninety-nine dollars and seventy cents. Is there a motion?
Move to pay that amount.
And a second.
I'll say it.
And Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Chairman Merrick?
Aye.
Supervisor Durk?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Radke?
Aye.
Supervisor Wolf?
Aye.
Uh, motion carries, on to fourteen, "Discussion of Possible Approval to Go Out to Bid for a New Public Works Building Part of Capital Project ID twenty sixteen nineteen for the purpose of housing town-owned plow trucks and other public works equipment."
Mr. Chairman, given the fact that we've received additional information on this over the last couple of days, that's been distributed to the Board members and added to the public, but it wasn't in the original packet, I'd like to make a motion to table this until the September thirteenth meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and lastly, a motion for adjournment.
I'll make a motion, we adjourn.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.